Father, thank you for letting us meet tonight. Without your help, without your service, we couldn't meet. I appreciate all you do for us. Please, guys, in the way we performed tonight, to make sure we make the best decisions for the city and the citizens of Poplar Bluff. Again, we thank you for everything you do for us tonight. I appreciate it. On the other hand, I hope you'll be with the Massingham family tonight, learning of Mark's father's passing. So please be with us, please be with them, and all the people that are here tonight. Thank you, amen.
Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilwoman Abashir.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Potem Russian.
Here.
Mayor Pearson. Here. We do have a call. Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting.
I believe I'm going to, my wife works at the college.
Okay.
And I'm going to abstain from voting on the security.
Okay.
Which item is it?
That would be item F.
Item F.
And are you abstaining from, abstaining from item E?
The only suggestion, if I may, Madam Mayor, unless you have a financial conflict of interest, in this case, I don't see how you do. I mean, those are usually the reasons why, under least Robert's rules of order, that you would abstain, is if you had a financial conflict of interest. In this case, I don't see how you have a conflict, because you're, you would have to be receiving some, you know, financial benefit from.
It's not a financial thing, though.
And so I understand your wife works there, and I mean, I think you just make that disclosure, and you still would be just fine. Again, you're telling everyone, hey, look, my wife works for the Three Rivers Community College, however, I'm doing my civic duty, is voting, you know, for X, for representing my ward. But it's up to you either way, I'm just, I'm trying to help you. If you want to participate, you should be able to do that.
If he want, if he wanted to, he would help you opportunity during the vote abstain, too, correct?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from item B on the workshop session, so. Anyone else?
Is that not on the voting as well?
It is on the voting as well. Okay. Citizens input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Saying none, we've gone to workshop required items. Item A, the city council will review a request from the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a conditional use permit to allow for a 45-foot freestanding emergency-use communications tower and a CX-3 central area commercial mixed-use zone. The applicants are the Southeast Missouri Amateur Radio Association, Lonnie Johnson, and the United Gospel Rescue Mission.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you stated, the applicant is Southeast Missouri Amateur Radio Association, and they are represented tonight by three individuals, one of them being Lonnie Johnson. And this is on the United Gospel Rescue Mission property, so they would be co-applicants. Any communications or radio or television towers require council approval. We did start with the Historical Preservation Commission for a certificate of appropriateness before we addressed it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is CX-3 central area mixed-use area, and existing use is the Rescue Mission at 400 South Broadway. Surrounding land use to the north, south, east, and west would be CX-3 central, central commercial mixed-use. Comprehensive plan does call for mixed-use commercial in this area. Utilities are available to the site and access is from South Broadway. This property was on CX-3 central commercial mixed-use in 2012, when the mixed-use zoning district was created, and the applicant proposes to erect a 45-foot radio transmission tower, which is by conditional use in the CX-3 zone. The tower, although mainly used for recreational purposes, as a ham radio location, would have the capacity to aid emergency services, city and county, in the event of a total failure of other transmission facilities. This does not depend upon computers or anything else, it's very basic, and if they have power, they can operate. So the fire chief and the emergency management director for the county both have spoken in favor of this, and the intent is to utilize it if and when it's necessary for that purpose. Proposed tower would be located at the south-central portion of the United Gospel Rescue Mission property near the existing pavilion. This property was located, this property is located in the historical commercial district of downtown, and approval of the tower was granted by certificate of appropriateness at the January 14, 2015 Historical Preservation Commission meeting. The planning department does recommend approval of this request with the following stipulation: the permit to be granted to the owner for this specific structure and specific use. If the business were to change owners, the new owner would have to reapply for the conditional use permit, the owner being United Gospel Rescue Mission. And any changes, future changes proposed for this location or this tower would need to be approved by Historical Preservation Commission prior to changes. There are representatives from the Amateur Radio Club here tonight as well, if you had questions that I might not be able to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Does everyone understand what is being asked? Does anyone want to make a motion to move it to the voting session?
I'll make a motion. We move it to the voting session.
One second.
Okay. Motion is second to move item A to the voting session, which will be held on March 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will ask Mayor Potem Russian to come and take over the meeting for a second.
Workshop item B, the council reviewed bids received for workers' compensation broker services.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I should have received in your packet two bids for the workers' comp brokerage service, one from MHJ Insurance and one from Holiday Insurance. Holiday's insurance bid for services was $11,800 annually. MHJ bid no commission. When they bid the property and casualty back in December, they thought the workers' comp was included in that package, so they included that amount in that package. So basically, they're saying they've already covered that. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer. There's also representatives from MHJ in the audience.
So MHJ won't have, won't be charged with anything?
Right, they've already included that commission in what we're paying them for the property and casualties.
Thank you.
I understand what the bid sheet says. I guess the confusion. I talked to Captain McLean, he was the chairman of the committee during the property and casualty, and out of the documentation I saw, I didn't see anything that referenced workers' comp at that time.
That is correct. It did not say anything about workers' comp. It did have one little clause that said, "Our other insurance deemed necessary by the city of Poplar Bluff," something like that, so. But as far as workers' comp, the words used in the bids, no, it was not included. And our anniversary date for all workers' comp is April 1st, and that's why we have it on voting session tonight also.
Has this been, has this been bid this way before with the city? I don't know what the track record was.
No, it really hasn't. We bid for brokerage services years ago for all insurance, and that's what MHJ had been doing for us, which included property and casualty and workers' comp.
I know, I guess what I'm asking is, did they have a separate, did they have a separate bid for workers' comp at the time?
No, sir.
It was all together?
It was all together, yes.
Okay. Has that been the way the city's done it in the past?
Yes.
So they've always bid them all the same, both, all at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Well, with the savings involved, without having to pay the additional brokerage fees, I think it's, you know, pretty clear what we, the best decision to do on that, so. Do I have a motion to move this?
I'll make a motion. We move it to the voting session tonight.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Item C, the city council will discuss a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit a grant application to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Traffic, and Safety Division for a grant to employ a full-time police officer for traffic enforcement.
Hello, Mayor, council. In order to complete Part II of the Missouri Department of Transportation, Traffic, and Safety Grant, I would need the mayor to execute the grant application so that we may receive funding for the police department.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Okay, so if anyone doesn't have any questions for her?
I'll make a motion. We move it to the voting session.
Okay.
One second.
Okay. A motion is second to move item C to the voting session, which will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, the city council will discuss the creation of an accounting manager position and then assistant city manager personnel director position for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Madam Mayor, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to bring this to the council's attention. In the transition plan that I've had for, right now, the city, the, we're winding this down, the city is using a consultant, right now Neil Conway is our accountant and consultant to handle all governmental type of activities. He does some enterprise work as well, but pretty much we're covered on that end by an accountant. And now making the transition from Mr. Conway to a full-time equivalent position here at the city, because Mr. Conway was never a permanent solution, never intended to be. I am proposing that we fund an accounting manager position, and so the old finance director position would, would go away, this would replace that position. And also moving to, okay, what happens to the current finance director? Well, the current finance director would get promoted to an assistant city manager slash personnel director position, who obviously is Mr. Massingham, as you guys know all very well, I'm sure the community knows pretty well as well. But that serves a couple of functions. One, we need a lot stronger focus on personnel matters in this community. Our, we need, we gotta update our personnel manual, our policies and procedures. Mr. Massingham is the best qualified to handle that. Also, I need a continuity plan. In events that I'm unavailable, you know, we, they need leadership in the city, in this office, as city managers, so Mr. Massingham would, would be a good person to fill that role. We have recent savings, as you see from my spreadsheet, actually, a little mini spreadsheet in my motion document, that shows how we can pay for these two positions. So I'd be, at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns you have at this time. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Make the motion. There's no question, I'll make the motion, move this to the voting session on 16th.
I'll second.
Motion is second to move item D to the voting session on March 16th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, the city council will discuss an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Three Rivers College for the lease of a building to house the 911 dispatch center.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. This one is simply to remember the motion that was made by council on December 29th of 2014 for the approval of disaster recovery plan. Part of that plan included housing our dispatch center from the current location where it's at in the police department to Three Rivers Community College. They had a vacant building, well, part of a vacant building, that could house the 911 center and which, and our dispatch center, because we're hoping to consolidate someday. And so, as you can see in the agreement that's been drafted, been looked at by all legal parties on both sides, very reasonable agreement. I, I suggest approval. But of course, I'd be happy to answer any questions or concerns at this time, Madam Mayor and council.
It is a temporary structure, or temporary location?
It's a, it's a permanent structure, but it's a temporary location. What I'm hoping, what'll happen, again, it's, we have to leave it up to the feasibility committee, but I would like the new police station to be a combination police station and 911 center. I think we have an opportunity to do that through our feasibility study process, but again, I'm hoping that that's supported by the council and the committee and community alike. And then, obviously, if that's not the case, you know, we can, we can go to a Plan B. But my hope is, obviously, through Renisha's efforts, we can secure, hopefully, some federal funding for this 911 center. I think if we can get the consolidation finally done with the county, which I'm hoping will happen in the next year, will be top on the list, I hope, with the state to get some funding as well, because they sure are encouraging consolidation, so. To answer your question is, no, this is, this site was never meant to be the final destination for our dispatch center, but contingent upon a lot of different variables, we'll have to wait and see what the permanent location wound up being.
How soon will this take place if we approve this?
Less than two weeks. We would be able to get this up and operational. And if I can take a moment to talk about that, the efforts of, you know, Captain McLean and staff, and our consultants from ISI, Bill Bach and his staff, I mean, they pulled this thing together pretty quickly, and to where we can, you know, now that we've got a unified network, we have the ability to move quickly when needed. And so, you know, kind of touting that, that recent investment that, you know, the city made really has paid off dividends here, and what made a migration months, maybe even years, is turning to weeks. And so, less than two weeks, we will be operational in that new center. The only variable that we had was the, is from AT&amp;T, because they have to physically relocate that AT&amp;T Positron system, which I haven't heard that they can't do it. So our goal is, if you remember, our original goal back in December 29th, was to have that 911 center up and operational before tornado season. Well, this is definitely ahead of that schedule. And so, I'm very pleased that we're probably going to beat our original deadline, so. Any other questions?
Make a motion that we move item E to the voting session.
Second.
Motion is second to move item E to the voting session, which will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item F, the city council will discuss an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Three Rivers College for policing services.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. We were approached by Three Rivers Community College as well in this front to help them with patrol services for their campus. We're in a position to help them, and I believe this is a definite efficient use of community money. You know, you never like circumstances where individuals lose their jobs. That's, you know, that's not the goal, but what is the goal with community money is to be the most efficient with those dollars. And sometimes that means you have to make moves that are not necessarily popular, but they're in the best interest of the community. This is one of those moves. I think the more, more we can align ourselves with Three Rivers Community College, the county, any other governmental agency, the lower our own cost, the better our taxpayers are for it. And not just on the taxpayer front of the city, there's taxpayers that fund TRCC as well, we all know this. So this is a win-win on both sides of that front. Now, it's unfortunate that some individuals have to lose employment to make that win, you know, happen, but in the end of the day, we have to do what's best for our community, and I feel this is moving us in that direction. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time, Madam Mayor.
I believe I should address some of these concerns. She has written me quite a sheet here, but apparently, these five officers have become part of the community at the college, and their concerns are going from, I see it kind of as a cop that walks the beat and knows the people and all that, to somebody that's going to be called in an emergency. Will we have somebody on campus all the time, or is, will they see much change there actually?
I don't think they're going to see a whole lot of change. If anything, I think they're going to see improved presence. There are hours, Monday through Thursday, we have a 15-hour window that will have a officer available Monday through Friday, I'm sorry, Monday through Thursday, and then on Fridays, there'll be a 10-hour presence on that day. And so, and it's going to be a certified SRO officer, School Resource Officer, SRO for short. And so, you're looking at 70 hours per week of coverage. Now, and also, when you get to, is this contract a 24/7 per se? No, but however, our police department is always here. They need something, we're going to be there. And so, we got a larger pool of police officers, certified police officers, that'll be available. And so, I think that's the resource they're tapping into. I think, in my opinion, of course, I'm a little biased, they're doing the right thing, because we're going to be bringing on two certified officers, one will be full-time, one will be part-time, and we have addition to two we already have on, on staff. So we'll have four SOR officers that we can provide to Three Rivers Community College if needed.
This is just an idea. If we went through with this, is it possible that if employment came open in the police department, that we could consider these officers who are losing their employment with the college?
Anyone who's free to apply for the positions, I would encourage them to do so. However, I would not give any preferential treatment to any single individual or professional. The police department has their process of screening candidates, I want to keep the integrity of that process. I'm not even involved in that process. I trust the rank and file of the police department to make the right decision. I would encourage them to apply, but however, I would not give any sort of preference towards those individuals. And again, this isn't anything personal against them, I mean, we'd encourage them to apply for the positions, but again, it's got to be the best officer who's the best qualified that will be hired, is my assumption, is what the process is in the police department.
Will we be doing, like, the ballgames and different activities out there?
They have those services, they have 70 hours a week. And they can use those 70 hours any way they wish, campus-wide. All right. Thank you. So it's, yeah, I mean, it'll be for any type of event, but I think for the most part, they want, like Mr. Tinsley said, is they want it for that community presence to make sure you're walking around doing the beat, making, showing that we're there.
I believe one of their concerns is the housing, too. They are used to 24/7, but I believe, like you say, our police force is actually bringing more resources than they have.
I believe so. Any.
We will be covered.
Yeah, any major domestic issue's going to happen anyways, our police department's going to be there to handle it anyways. And so, people need to understand that we do have 24/7 coverage, a police department that is citywide, and TRCC is in the city. Again, I may be biased, but I, I don't want people to think this, we got one of the best police departments in all southeast Missouri. Not any offense to these individuals, I'll take my police department any day of the week. They, they serve with the community well, I, I feel safe in my community, I encourage them to feel safe in their community, because they're going to have the full resources of this department to make everything happen, to make sure they're safe.
Make a motion, move this to the voting session.
Second.
Motion is second to move item E, I'm sorry, item F to the voting session, which will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item G, the city council will discuss a resolution making appointments to the Finance Committee for the city of Poplar Bluff.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry to keep rolling through here. In the, you know, from the last council meeting where we officially created the committee, this is just the last bit of housework to get the, the committee staffed and ready to go. And so, in your packets, you'll see the recommended appointments to the Finance Committee, which include Jim Bailey, Ken James, Matt Funky, Paul Duckett, Marty Michael, Sharon Kissinger, and Mayor Angela Pearson. And so, staff recommends their appointment. All of them have been contacted and asked to serve, with the exception of the mayor. That was, that was recommended council to appoint you on that one, and not that I oppose it, I just, that's one for clarification for the public, we didn't ask you, so we appreciate your serving. And I think this will be, again, an asset to this community, having this, not only this committee formed, but these individuals staffing them. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Make a motion, we move it to the voting session. Second.
Motion is second to move item G to the voting session, which will be held tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to the action required items. Bill number 7796, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding between the city of Poplar Bluff and Midcontinent Nell regarding Chapter 100 tax abatement.
Move for the first reading, bill number 7796.
Okay. Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7796. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the Poplar Bluff Missouri authorizing, the city did enter a memorandum of understanding between the city and Midcontinent Nell regarding Chapter 100 tax abatement.
Move for second reading, bill number 7796.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7796. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri authorizing, the city to enter into a memorandum of understanding between the city and Midcontinent Nell regarding Chapter 100 tax abatement.
Move for adoption. Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7796. Do we have any comments or questions? I just want to thank Mr. Kaplan and Midcontinent Nell for working on and bringing jobs to our community, and I think we should approve this.
Don't want to forget the effort of the Chamber of Commerce as well.
Roll call? Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abashir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have six yes votes. Okay. Bill number 7797, the city council will take action on an ordinance creating a volunteer position of chaplain for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department.
Move for first reading of bill number 7797.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7797. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with Poplar Bluff, Missouri, creating the volunteer position of chaplain for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department.
Move for the second reading of 7797.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7797. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In accordance with Poplar Bluff, Missouri, creating the volunteer position of chaplain for the Poplar Bluff Fire Department.
Move for adoption of bill number 779- Move for adoption of bill number 7797.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of bill number 7797. Any comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Passes with six yes votes.
This time, I'll ask Mayor Protim Russian.
Bill number 7798, the city council will take action on an ordinance accepting a bid for worker compensation brokerage services.
Move for first reading of bill number 7798.
Second.
I have a first and a second. For first reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Smith?
In order of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, selecting an insurance broker for worker compensation insurance for the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
I have a first and a second for second reading of bill 7798. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Smith?
In order of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, selecting an insurance broker for worker compensation insurance for the city of Papa Bluff.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion to adopt, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is there any discussion?
Only question I have, Mr. Mayor Protim, is who are we awarding this one to?
This, as far as I understand, will be MHJ.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's clear, that we're awarding this to MHJ.
It's hard to beat zero.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
We have five yes votes.
Bill number 7800, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Three Rivers College for the lease of a building to house the 911 dispatch center.
Move for first reading of bill number 7800. Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7800. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Three Rivers College for the lease of a building to house the 911 dispatch center.
Move for second reading, bill 7800.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7800. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Three Rivers College for the lease of a building to house the 911 dispatch center.
Move for adoption, bill number 7800.
Second.
Motion for adoption, motion is second for adoption of 7800. Do we have any comments and questions? Roll call?
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Passes with six yes votes.
Bill number 7801, the city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Three Rivers College for policing services.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of bill number 7801. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Three Rivers College, the city to provide policing services to the college.
Move for second reading, bill number 7801.
Second.
Motion is second for second reading of bill number 7801. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
In order of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Three Rivers College, for the city to provide policing services to the college.
Move for adoption of 7801.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of 7801. Any comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Passes with six yes votes.
Resolution number 1816, the city council will take action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and submit a grant application to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Traffic and Safety Division for a grant to employ a full-time police officer for traffic enforcement.
Move for the reading of resolution number 1816.
Second.
Motion is second for a reading of resolution 1816. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, to execute and submit a grant application to the Missouri Department of Transportation, Traffic and Safety Division to employ a full-time police officer for traffic enforcement.
Move for second reading.
Move for adoption.
Oh, move for adoption, excuse me.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of resolution 1816. Do we have any comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Resolution number 1817, the city council will take action on a resolution making appointments to the finance committee for the city of Papa Bluff.
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion is second for first reading of 1817. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Smith?
A resolution of the city of Papa Bluff, Missouri, making appointments to the finance committee for the city.
Move for adoption of resolution of 1817.
Second.
Motion is second for adoption of 1817. Any comments or questions? Roll call?
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman DeGerris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abshir.
Yes.
Mayor Protim Russian.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Moving on, the city council, the city of Papa Bluff, will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1, RSMO litigation, 610.021.2, RSMO real estate, and Section 610.021.3, RSMO personnel.
Move to close from open, move to closed after the city manager's report.
Second.
Okay, a motion to close, to move to closed meeting from open after the city manager's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Kaplan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today, I sat in on the municipal utility advisory board meeting. We had a good presentation by Smith and Company. Just kind of gave us a history over, or really, a 12-year period of, from 2003 to the present, of working on the DNR slash EPA settlement agreement, and all the events leading up to the current recommendation for doing a hybrid kind of solution to our current lagoon system. I thought it was a very educational process. I learned a lot from it. We're going to continue to learn more about our options. I informed the advisory committee that, you know, given the large contingent of the current council and myself weren't present in 2012, when the current alternative was chosen, and that we're second-guessing their hard work, we're not, it's just, I told them, hey, look, it's not an adversarial position we're taking, we're taking an educational position. We think we owe due diligence to this community to make sure we're looking at all options. It's very possible, obviously, given the current option, that that's the one we choose. But again, we want to show our community that we take all these financial decisions very seriously, especially when you're talking 17, 18 million dollar-plus investment. So, so I, you know, so I told them that is, you know, so our lunch to learn tomorrow is, again, to look at options over and beyond our current engineering firm, that is no way, I want the community to think that in no way we're disrespecting the opinion we have from Smith and Company, they're a great engineering firm, we appreciate their hard work. We're just making sure we're getting that second opinion before we pull the trigger on multimillion-dollar investment for the community, just to make sure we're doing the right thing, which, you know, everyone, I think, on that advisory board does good work, I think they represent the city well. And again, we don't want, I just don't want to leave them with the impression that we're looking over their shoulders, or somehow not trusting their opinion, we're just educating ourselves. Also, in that, in those discussions, there was an inquiry made by the chair, where we're sitting with the Becker debt. And I made sure, one thing I just want to plead guilty on here is, to the mayor and to the council, is I did share closed-session information at this meeting. The reason why I felt I needed to do that is there's been this gamut of information, there's been some of the Becker information that's been public and common knowledge out in the public, and then there's been the Becker information that's been under closed-session privilege to talk about the legality and the strategy with what we want to do moving forward. Given that the advisory board really made the recommendation to continue to collect the debt, I felt like they were owed an answer. So I made sure that they heard the answer from the city. At this time, we took a, not a, basically, an informal vote, like a straw poll during closed meeting, that we will no longer seek to collect the debt from Mr. Becker. That was a completely unanimous vote. And so, at this time, unless I get further direction from the city, the city will cease all collection efforts at this time and move on. And so, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't any questions regarding that, Madam Mayor, regarding anything that I discussed in regards to the municipal advisory committee meeting, and I do have one other item, but I just wanted to stop, pause there for a moment, just to make sure there isn't any questions or concerns before moving to my second item. No? Okay. The second item is just a, basically, a housekeeping item. I don't, I rarely bring anything up that's really of personal nature, anyone that really knows me, is I'm, you know, I'm quite reserved and obviously about my personal life, and that's because I just, it's my life, right? It's, but when you're a public official, even if you're appointed, you're held under a higher standard and a different scrutiny. And so, one of the things I wanted to bring to the public's attention is, I was informed by, boy, this would have been three employers ago, that Donna Farley and the DAR decided to file a open records request for my personnel records. Why am I telling you this? The reason why I'm telling you this is because, one, I just wanted to fully disclose the efforts in which this paper will go to, to try to either discredit or humiliate or embarrass me. Let me show you how much I care about being humiliated or embarrassed. I'm going to not only read to you what's in this personnel file, which I got a copy of from the city of Wayland, Michigan, I'm actually going to put it on file with the city clerk's office for anyone in the city of Papa Bluff that wishes to view this. That shows you how much I'm scared about disclosing anything in my personnel file from any of my previous employers. What's also included in here is my criminal background check, and obviously, a disclosure when I filed bankruptcy in 1999. It was discharged in 2000. And so, as you can see, I'm not in any way embarrassed about my past. We all get to, you know, we all have a past, it either has good or bad, mine's legal. As far, last I heard, bankruptcy is still a legal process in the United States, a little quote from Donald Trump, who uses it a lot more than I would ever use it, and hope to God I never have to be put in a situation to ever have to use that again. I want to be, you know, I want to be the most effective city manager I can be for you guys, but if you think by going 15 years into my past somehow puts a little chink in the armor of any respect that anyone in this community has for me, I guess I'm sorry if I failed you. But I can tell you this, I have learned since then, I've become a stronger professional, I've gotten a master's degree since then. I was even my first wife back then, 15 years ago. I'm married to now the most beautiful woman in the world, in my opinion, who's been nothing but supportive, not only of me personally, but my career. Without my wife, I wouldn't have even gotten my master's degree, she put me through college. And so, if there's ever any question, folks, I'm talking to the community, because unfortunately, it seems like this public wants to be told what to think through either Donna Farley or Don Schreiber. So unless you want to stop being told what, how to think, why don't you come ask me these questions? Because as you can see, I'm not afraid of any of it. I'm not afraid of Don Schreiber, I'm not afraid of Donna Farley, I'm not afraid of anyone, because I've got nothing to fear. I've done nothing wrong, I've done nothing but be a good city manager, I think of being a good public servant, but we are held to a higher scrutiny. So, hey, you want this information, be happy to give it to the clerks, but you will have it on file. If you want any other personnel records of mine, please let me know. I'll go to Dairy Queen in Battle Creek, Michigan, which was my first job I ever had, when I was 15 years old. You want that personnel record? I'll get it. Any questions?
Well, Mr. Kaplan, first of all, I think that the select committee vetted you fairly well. I know that you've given your best effort forward. I know that you use best practice principles taught by National Association of City Managers. We just need to keep putting one foot in front of the other, taking care of our challenges, moving forward. And hopefully, you know, you won't have to work with these distractions, and you can put 100% of your time to the problems and the situations that we need to deal with. And it's not, these problem situations aren't to blame to anyone in particular, these are things that just come up in municipalities and governance.
Yeah.
And it's just, we need to deal with them. We need to put our attention on them, we need to deal with them. I have not, you know, I believe that we just need to move forward. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying, we just need to deal with the current problems we have, current challenges we have to advance the city.
The only other thing I'd like to add is, I read the newspaper article from our last council meeting we had on last Wednesday, and I think the newspaper article came out on Thursday. The headline was written, "City Struggles to Secure Financing for a Capital Improvement Plan." And if you read the article, it talks about all these anonymous sources, and, you know, of course, they're not divulged, and talks about how a banker, talks about how the lowest confidence they've ever had in the city is now because of my leadership and everything there is about it, apparently. Let me, you know, there's a reason why I didn't write a news release to that, because it seemed like I'm always having to put something out to try to clean up their work, be it Donna's or Don's, or whoever's work it is. I'm just not going to do that anymore. If you guys want to really, if you want them to continue to think for you, they can. Otherwise, let me share with you just a little tidbit of what they didn't report. And so, certificate of participation bonds, why did I choose that funding vehicle over a lease equipment purchase option? Well, because with the feasibility committee now being put in place for the city hall, police station, and municipal court system, I needed to dip my toe into those waters to see, hey, look, you know, what, how are people going to scrutinize the city's credit? Because that is the funding vehicle that we're more than likely going to look at if we have to fund a new police station, even if it's rehabilitation. we have to fund a new police station, even if it's rehabilitation. And so, with that, we've got roughly, I think, about 11 banks here in town, or I think, if you'll tell me, plus, I think it's here 10 or 11. And I, historically, have always, any time I've asked for any financing, I send it to those local banks, because there is such a strong feeling here in this community to keep things local, I've always tried to do that as much as I can. Knowing, though, for full disclosure, folks, of those 11 or 10 or 11 banks that are here in town, I knew there was only two that could really offer a true COP to the city, US Bank and Commerce Bank. The other ones, it's, they just don't have the tools for it, and I knew that. It's not that they couldn't have participated, it's just they didn't have the full gamut of investment opportunities to do such. Now, if I'm wrong, I asked those other eight or nine banks to stand forward and tell me I'm wrong. But COPs, unless you've got a full diverse investment wing that can handle these types of bond issuances, you only got to select a mod banks here in town that can do that. So, of those two that I believed that can do the COP, I got, I got a proposal from one, Commerce Bank. So, I was at 50% of who I thought could actually give it to me. But what's the headline in the paper is how the city struggles to secure financing. Guys, we're at A-plus credit from S&amp;P. We're not struggling with credit, we're not struggling with cash reserves. The reason why some others didn't participate, because the guys have only been here six months, and so, they wanted to see a longer track record of me being here. The other thing that they didn't put in the paper, which I have in writing from one that did not want to participate, is they said the way that the previous administration burned through cash was a huge concern of theirs, and they wanted to see what policies I was putting in place to stop that process from continuing, the subsidization I've been talking about since day one here. But was that put in the paper? No. Because I, because we all know why. It's, I just want to share with the community, again, since, you know, they want to know that's what happened, is this, the city is not struggling. Right now, it's not. It will struggle in three to five years if we don't do something. And I guarantee you, if I had to leave employment here soon, which I'm sure will be to assure the happiness of that small few, I would be used as a scapegoat of how the city was made bankrupt by Heath Kaplan and his policies. That's why I'm glad this finance committee is put together. We're going to really talk about the financial health and the real truth of the matter with real professionals, because there is no professionals at the DAR that I've known. There is none. And that's, that's too bad. With the exception of Dave Silverberg, that's the only human being I know of that actually works in that building. The rest of them are just not human. Sorry. But I'm not meant to offend anyone or keep attacking them, but this is just garbage. And...
Well, the photographers are pretty decent.
Yeah, I hope so. But anyway, I...
Sorry.
So, I'm off on my contingent, but...
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay.
Please do.
You brought up the MU advisory board wanting the council to continue collecting debt on the Popper Bluff Internet bill. My question is, did you bring up the cost of litigation accrued by the former leadership was a total of around $80,000 spent on litigation to collect the debt in which we only collected $200 worth of funded assets?
Well, yeah.
If so, if you did, what was their suggestion for proceeding with collection at a cost that is not counterproductive? The debt is about $250,000.
Well, I got a question on that. So, Mr. Manassim, you got a moment to come to the podium, please? We did talk about that, and currently, I think we've accrued around $85,000. I did have a discussion with one of the advisory board members about the details behind what made up that $85,000. So, do you, do you remember from recollection as to what, what were, just, I mean, don't give me the infinite detail, but just kind of give me some general feel, that $85,000, where did that go towards?
I think the bulk of it was for legal fees with, I forgot the firm's name, but...
Brown and James, or Damon Browns, or wherever it was, is that it?
The attorney was Carl Lumley's. I'm not sure what firm he's with, but yes, I mean, the bulk of that was for legal fees.
Do you know who, who hired this person?
I don't.
I mean, it was obviously former leadership.
Yeah, I'm assuming utilities, they had worked with, he kind of, Lumley specializes in communication and broadband things, I think, and he was brought on board because of that reason.
So...
Their statements were that a bulk of this money was spent in our defense because Becker sued us.
Sueed us. Is that true?
That's probably true, I really wasn't involved in that, but...
So, there was a bulk of the 85 that was in the defense of the city, because Mr. Becker did litigate against us. I don't know who litigated first, but...
I'm not sure either, but yes, it was going back and forth, definitely, so...
So, if we were to collect, if we were to go, basically, it costs nothing to file